Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to go back into open session.
Second. Been properly moved in second, we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back into open session. I will now, poll members certify that to best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed, and considered by the board. If any member believes the board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter.
So certified.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. This is the Monday, March 4th, 2024, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome those of you who are in attendance here in the public meeting room and those of you who are watching via the live stream. The first item will be our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would like to participate, please stand. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance and your wisdom as we conduct the business of the people of Louisa County. Lord, we ask that you would watch over this proceeding, give us wisdom, guidance, and the courage to do what's right for our citizens. We ask that you would continue to bless the United States of America, that you would keep those who protect us both here at home and abroad safe, bring them home safely to their families. Lord, we ask that you would be with our President, with our Governor, and those who are in positions of leadership in this country, that they would continue to do what's right for the country and for our state. We ask this all in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me one second to find my agenda.
What, Ellen?
Yeah. First is the adoption of the agenda. I do know we have some changes. Mr. McCotter.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCotter has it.
Yeah, I would say that we would remove, I would recommend that we remove the public hearing on the LDR 2024, 2023-04 proposed amendments to Chapter 86, Land Development Regulations, Article 4.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We also need to remove the presentation from the Louisa Arts Center under information discussion, and want to add on the consent agenda approving the license agreement for a construction trailer with Martin Horn.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
So moved, Chair.
Second.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, we adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You know, we're not electronically voting. It moves along just a little quicker today, doesn't it?
Lot quicker.
Lot quicker. Next, we have recognitions. We have two recognitions. The first one is a presentation proclaiming March 3rd through the 9th, 2024, as Women in Construction Week. Mr. Goodman.
We have representatives to accept this. Yes, please come forward, and we'll have you stand right up front. Come right on up front here. Right in front of the board.
Hi, page seven. How are you?
We're going to take a picture as well. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, this is a resolution proclaiming March the 3rd through the 9th, 2024, as Women in Construction Week. Whereas the National Association of Women in Construction, or NAWIC, founded in 1953, started as a local support network for a small number of women in the construction industry, and has since gone on to ease the passage of women into construction, helping to create awareness and better working space for those who desire to work in the industry. And whereas Women in Construction Week takes place during the first full week in March every year, and it is a time to highlight and promote all the great initiatives and work of women within the industry. And whereas this year's theme, Keys to the Future, celebrates the strength and knowledge of women and the vital role that they play in shaping the future of the construction industry. And whereas the Richmond 141 Chapter of NAWIC are distinguished voices promoting the employment and advancement of women in construction. And whereas the Women in Construction Week is an opportunity to recognize the many dedicated workers and volunteers for their steadfast support of women in construction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims March the 3rd through the 9th, 2024, as Women in Construction Week in Louisa County, Virginia, and calls for the observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Mr. McCotter, I believe you will be presenting this one.
On behalf of the citizens of Louisa County and the Board of Supervisors, I would like to present you with this resolution honoring women in construction. And this came to me first, and I brought it to the Board of Supervisors, and I was completely honored that you found me a suitable liaison for this. I'm surprised you're not wearing your hard hats today.
I wore earlier.
I know that Louisa appreciates what it is that you're doing in your industry, and I wanted to make sure that everyone in the county was aware of that with this resolution. So thank you to the Senator Goodman and all the fellow supervisors that support this. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You certainly have a minute or two if you'd like to say anything to the board or to the public. We're happy to have you speak.
I would just like to thank the board for announcing.
You used to mic. That way it'd be for prosperity.
I'd like to thank the board very much for this, and it just makes the pathway for us women in construction just much more easier. We've been fighting this battle for a very, very long time, not just in construction, but in all of our industries that we're in. But construction is still a man's world sometimes for us, and this makes this so much easier, and I thank you, and I thank the citizens of Louisa County for supporting this as well. And I'm proud to be here.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation commending and honoring Mr. Eric Purcell for his distinguished service as the Louisa District Representative of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. And I don't know if Mr. Purcell's here, but I know his son and his wife are here, and he's probably hidden by the television screen, but if y'all would come up to the front.
I feel a little undressed.
You're the most comfortable guy here, Luke.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, members of the public, this is a resolution commending and honoring Eric F. Purcell for his distinguished service as the Louisa District Representative on the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Mr. Purcell was elected to represent the citizens of the Louisa District on the Louisa County Board of Supervisors in November of 2003, and began his first term on the board in January of 2004, and served through December 2007. And whereas Mr. Purcell was reelected in November of 2019 and served a second term from January of 2020 through December of 2023, and also served as vice chairman in 2020. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Purcell helped to achieve fiscal stability, planned for responsible growth, and facilitated crucial infrastructure development and placement within the county. And whereas through his leadership, dedication, and expertise as a board member, Mr. Purcell's capacity to define and execute goals benefiting Louisa County led to numerous and significant accomplishments, including but certainly not limited to service on the James River Water and
Authority to enhance the ability to develop the sign crossroads area by bringing sufficient and reliable water from the James River to the area, shared geographically by Louisa and Flavana County. The project services serves to meet the long-term water supply needs for each county and supports each county's required 50-year water supply plan. And also played a pivotal role in the resolution of a longstanding boundary issue with Goochlin County, as well as an ongoing commitment to the availability of broadband internet service across the county through the county's partnership with Firefly Fiber Broadband on the regional internet service expansion project. And whereas over the course of his distinguished service on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Purcell served on numerous committees, boards, and organizations such as the Louisa County Chamber of Commerce, the Planning Commission, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, the Board Representative to the Town of Louisa, the Louisa County Water Authority Board, the James River Water Authority, and the Dogs Running at Large Work Group. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Purcell exemplified kindness, compassion, and courtesy towards fellow supervisors, citizens, and others, striving to lead by example, offering unique insight, and working to build consensus even under the most challenging situations to best serve the needs of Louisa County citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Eric F. Purcell for his dedicated service to our citizens and his leadership on the Board of Supervisors with respect and gratitude. Chairman Adams and Supervisor Woodward, if you would be willing to present.
Just a little something, Eric. The citizens of Louisa District and Louisa County certainly recognize the work that you've done, but we can never repay. Thank you.
Mr. Purcell, we'll give you the microphone in just a second, but is there anyone else on the board, Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I've known Eric a long time. Other than him being a Cavalier fan, he's a pretty good guy. But I think I had an opportunity to serve beside Eric, and his love for the county is unmatched. And everything he did, he wanted to do it for the good of the county. And I always appreciated that in him and his hard work. In fact, he's still working, helping us with the James River Project, and I want to thank Eric for what he's done.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Purcell, it was a pleasure to work with you. You always brought a lot of honor and integrity to this board, and we appreciate that. Your word was always good and your intentions were always noble and honorable for the people of Louisa and doing what's best. And thank you for your service. Look forward to seeing you around the community.
Eric, I'd just like to thank you for my two years that I've had an opportunity to work with you. You always answered my questions. You answered my phone calls. You were there to support me. And Mr. Supervisor Barnes said it, you have a love for this community and this county that goes above and beyond, and thank you. And you take it deep and personal, too, the decisions and everything you've done here and will continue to do. So thank you. Thank you.
Eric, I certainly want to thank you for my time with you on the planning mission and the board. And you've always been one that has been a conservative and a thoughtful person that, you know, thinks about the problems that come before the county that have to be resolved. You've done a great job and I enjoyed working with you on it. Thanks.
Mr. Purcell, in the short time that I've been on this board and you have not been on the board, I actually followed the board prior to the election. And listening to you up here, I can echo the sentiments of the sitting board members here, that the honor and integrity that you brought to Louisa County's Board of Supervisors will be difficult to match, although there are very many honorable and integrity-filled people here. But you set a high standard. Thank you for that example for me to follow.
Well, Mr. Purcell, well, first of all, I'm a little miffed that you always answered Mrs. Jones's calls, because I can't say that you always answered mine. You always called me back, but you didn't always answer them the first time. You know, I thought today about what I wanted to say here this evening, and somebody said it, I wrote it down. In a time that you were on this board that I served with you, you were always level-headed, you were honest, you tried to find consensus, and you always had the interest of the people of the county at heart. And I miss serving with you. I enjoyed serving with you. You had, we talked the other day when Mr. Gentry was here, some of that institutional knowledge because of your prior service on the board when you were 18 or 19 or something like that. But at a younger age, and I could always count on your word, and that means a lot to me. When somebody tells me and gives me their word, that's their bond. You never broke your word to me. You were always straightforward and honest. And I can't say anything higher, I can't pay you a higher compliment than to say you're a good, straight, honest man. And I miss you on the board, wish you the best of luck, and we'll give you the microphone, sir.
Well, thank you all so much. It's hard to say anything after that. But just briefly, I know y'all have a meeting, but for 45 seconds, I just want to say three thank yous. And this is for both times serving. The first one's to the citizens of Louisa District for giving me the opportunity to serve. It doesn't happen without their faith that you can do the job, and all of us that have been in public service are testament to that. So I'd like to thank them. The second group I'd like to thank is all of you and those that are no longer on the board who I served with as well. These are important decisions. These are decisions about how good our schools are, what our fiscal situation is, where we're going to be in 20, 30, 40 years. And you'd like to think that you leave it at the water's edge when you go home, but you don't. You do take it home.
You do.
And you think about it, and you lose sleep over it. And I know the hours that you put in, I know the thoughts that you put in. And the citizens of Louisa are very fortunate. I've been, as an applicant at other boards throughout the state, and the citizens of Louisa are fortunate to have a Board of Supervisors, a school board, the elected officials that we have, in my judgment. So thank you for the time that we had that I was able to serve with you. I think we got a lot done. I think there's more to do, but I have every confidence that you all will see it through. And I mentioned that, you know, leaving it at the water's edge, and it's almost impossible to do, which leads me to the third group I want to thank, which is my wife and son, who are here with me tonight. Because it doesn't stop, like I said, at a board meeting. You do struggle with these things, you take it home. And this team, this threesome that we have right here, has been invaluable and so supportive of me throughout every bit of my public service. And I just can't thank them enough for that. And I know you all feel the same about your families, and you should, because it's definitely a team effort to do this job. Thank you all very much. I really enjoyed serving with you, and I'll be around, I'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you again, sir. Next is the public comment period. I do have some cards. When I call your name, come to the podium, state your name and your voting district. You do not have to give your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. When you have 15 seconds, I'll give you a 15-second warning. Scott, if we could get the timer up there. The first card I have is Fred Vanderberg.
Thank you. New resident to the Louisa area, from Colorado.
Give your name and your voting district first, just for the record.
My name is Fred Vanderberg, and I live at 2326 Holland Creek Road, Louisa.
You're good.
Yesterday, I was out walking with my year-and-a-half-old grandson. And every time he sees something that isn't right, or he's at the table and the food falls on the floor, he'll, anything that's not right, it's, oh, no. Oh, no. And he points. I took him on a walk up Holland Creek Road, and every time we saw a piece of trash along the side of the road, he'd say, oh, no. Oh, no. So I got home and I pondered on it. I've been raised in a family of farmers since 1779. Our place in the Finger Lakes in New York was a Revolutionary War grant that is still owned by my family today. We milk 8,000 head of cattle there. I owned a ranch in Colorado that encompassed over 4,000 acres. And now, because of my grandchildren, I've come to Louisa. I bought Eddie Richardson's farm, and we're going to raise beef cattle there. We're stewards of this land. And there's no bigger abuse of it than trash. Now, I looked, I took time to look at the code of ordinance for Louisa and also the state regulations on littering. They're very strict, they're very enforceable, but we don't do it. If you go by the recycling and refuge area on Courthouse Road, that area inside that fence is beautiful. Those people take care of it, they run a good ship there, it's well taken care of, it's well guarded for make-shuring that stuff goes in the right containers and does the right things. And you drive outside of there 10 feet, and you got more garbage you can pick up for trash bags. Now this morning, when I came into Louisa, there was somebody with a landscape trailer. He had enough garbage on the back of his truck in the trailer, the landscape trailer, to cover up that whole refuge area. And he was pulling in there, and he had two bags open in the back, and you could see it blowing off into the roadside. So I guess, what do we need to do? I talked to my wife about it this morning, and she said, well, maybe you and I should start picking the stuff up. We like to walk, we like to do things. I mean, we're busy people. But I have no problem with that. But on Courthouse Road, where there's not much of a shoulder, you're taking your life in your hands, and there's no place for us to park our vehicle. Now, I'm not just bringing a problem to you, because I'm the type of person that doesn't like people that bring problems, that doesn't have an idea of what they can do to make it better. But I'm asking you folks, what can we do to make it better and how can I help?
I appreciate that, sir. Your time's up, but I will give this back to Mr. Goodwin. If you'll give us your, because there are programs, if we'll get some additional contact information, we'll have county staff in touch with you tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
I say, I'm going to give this to Mr. Goodwin. We'll get the remainder of your contact information, and we'll have a member of the county staff contact you tomorrow, because there are programs that can help. The county has some, there's a very active organization, so, and I appreciate it. It's an ongoing problem. You're going to hear the board addressing it more and more over the next couple of weeks.
It's just too bad, because it's getting worse and worse and worse.
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Up next is Vicki Hart.
She's doing good last, she goes second today. Look at her, Ms. Hart.
Vicki Hart, Louisa District, Town of Louisa. You need to make your cards bigger, I ran out of space.
Need to talk about less, you have three minutes.
No, I can't do that. Nice try, though. Number one, I spoke before the Virginia Legislature a couple of weeks ago, and what I talked about is they have two priorities, agriculture and 2050. And I told them it is impossible to accomplish 2050 and protect agriculture at the same time, because their bills to allow override locality zoning requirements in order to put green energy on it of whatever type directly removes the food source that they're planning on putting it on. So I told them, they have to make it a choice as to which one is the priority, because both cannot be the priority, one destroys the other. The second is, I was not here, but I did pay attention to what happened at the previous meetings. There was a request for funding for the Historical Society, and I know that they had an increase the prior year, but I also want to tell you that support them as much as you can, because losing our history is becoming clearer every day, and they are the only ones that are helping to promote it. I am in the Medical Reserve Corps, as you know, and I'm being trained this week to, in order to provide naloxone or Norcan to residents, and I will be training people in the county whenever it is needed, and I will be a source of dispensing if needed. The other thing was, I am starting a monthly meeting at Smokey Nettie's in Louisa, the first Tuesday of every month, for anybody to come talk to me about what you would like to see to improve the business, work, and life of residents of the Town of Louisa. So if any of you have something for those businesses, please come by, stop and say hello, and I'll take your recommendations and/or complaints into account.
You could be there all day?
Only from 6:00 to 8:00?
Ah, okay. I was checking.
I will not be there all day, I can't eat that much barbecue. And the last thing, let me make sure I covered all... Oh, yes, I did not. You redid the assessments again, but for some reason you screwed up and you gave me a $9,000 decrease.
We'll have to fix that.
I know, well, I'm just letting you know, I appreciate the decrease. I was kind of surprised when the assessment came back, and I was really surprised when it went down instead of up.
Well, in all fairness, Commissioner Revenue takes credit for all of those things, so it's not us.
And also, school games. I spent a lot of time in the Virginia House and Senate.
About 10 extra seconds, because we were talking.
And because of the school games, which are about to be signed by North, boy, they're going to kill me for that one, by Yonkin, then I wanted to remind you that 25% of that is taxed. And Henrico and Richmond, none of them took those machines out, because they knew it was going to be passed. So just letting you know that that's an extra source of income when he makes the little signature, unless he decides to veto it, that you can use for these things like the Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Jonathan Frith.
I have some handouts for y'all. Jonathan Frith, I vote in the Mineral District. I am here representing the Jefferson Area Board for Aging, that's JABA. I am the Louisa Programs Manager. I've been in the community, I've been with JABA since October of last year, and I've been in the community since 2015, either working for Parks and Recreation or as a resident. I'm just going to tell you all a couple of stories. The stories that you have there are around the whole region, but we really, we thank you all for your support when it comes to, you know, our programming. The Jefferson Area Board on Aging is, as y'all know, is, we have our two programs here in Louisa. One is the JREC, which is the Respetant Enrichment Center, which is adults, which is for adults with disabilities. And the other is our Community Center. And the other is our Community Center, and that is for independent senior citizens to come out and enjoy programming. We also have our Aging Service Coordinator who does a lot for the community around here as well. I'm gonna take all these two quick stories, and that show compassion. And the first one is about one of our volunteers and one of our members. We have the luxury of the high school cosmetology class coming out on a daily basis. Well, not a daily basis, but once a week, and doing, you know, minor nail care, hair, all that. And one day, one of our members was late to this...to our program, and one of our volunteers took it upon herself to do her nails for her and to show that compassion, and she felt pampered in that moment, and it just meant a lot to her. The other story I'm gonna tell you is when I first got here in November, I had a member. Her name is Jo Vida, and her daughter's name is Sarah. Sarah came to visit us one day, and most members are picked up by transportation, other organizations that do that. And she started crying, and the first thing that she...he said was how much we mean to her and how much we mean to her mother. And in that moment, I didn't really think about the member that we take care of on a daily basis. I thought of her because we provide that respite and it's...and that time for our...the caregivers of these members to get things done, go to their jobs, have peace of mind that they know they're gonna be taken care of. So I just appreciate y'all for all y'all do to help us achieve that goal, and I thank you for thinking of older adults in our community, so.
Thank you, sir. Next is John Wayne. Scott, can you give me five minutes? He's representing Lake.
Actually, I had only intended to be here to speak at the public hearing, and that's over with, and so...
It was deferred.
I don't...yeah, it's moved, so I don't have anything except for to apologize to Ms. Jones again for sending the email earlier today.
No worries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, though.
So, that's all the...I do have one more card from someone from out of the county, but that's all the cards I have for Louisa County residents. So according to our bylaws, Louisa County residents get to speak first, so...yes, sir?
I filled out a card online.
I got it now. Just looked at a piece of paper.
All good. Brian Hennett from the Green Springs District here to speak on the displaced skateboarders of...and BMX riders of the county. I have a big event coming up, June 8th, Go Skate Louisa Day. I have planned a big event with the blessing of Parks and Recreation and Tourism Department, and it's getting bigger than I ever imagined. We're expecting 500 or so people from all over the country. We've got major industry brands on board coming. Some pros are gonna be here. We're putting Louisa on the map. And got well over a dozen sponsors right now, and it's just growing every single day. The more I beat the streets, the more they see how relentless I am. The more they see my passion, the more they're like, "We're coming." There's a huge Jackalope Fest in Virginia Beach five days before my event, so all the pros are already on the East Coast from California. Stars are aligning. I'm doing everything I can with the help of Strange House Skate Shop, Cinema Skate Shop, and their connections through the brand reps to get pros here. That being said, a lot of revenue coming to Louisa. They're eating in our stores, like eating in our restaurants, shopping in our stores, buying gas at our gas stations, staying in our hotels. Just from traveling the past few years to skate myself with my children, I should have kept a tally of how much money I've spent in surrounding counties. I've been to every single skate park in every single county all around, and everyone's fixing them up. We need to...it's our field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. We will bring them. I know y'all like that movie. It's a good one. Anyway, I grew up playing baseball. I grew up playing team sports. But every night when I was done with my team sports, I'd go to the basement, go to the garage, I would skateboard. It taught me to, you know, be relentless. I'm gonna keep coming till the wheels fall off, so. Just wanted to let you guys know, everyone behind me, we're gonna have a big event. It's gonna be fun. There's gonna be food. There's gonna be music. There's gonna be fellowship. It's just gonna be an awesome day. Get everybody on board and raise awareness. Taking or selling advertisement banners because I wanna have a contest series once the park gets here, if it hopefully does. Praying every single night about that. And I've reached out to big skate park builder companies as well. I showed you Fifth Pocket Skate Park last time I was here. Reached out to the Ryan Sheckler Foundation, who helps grant riding. Reached out to Tony Hawks. Let's see, what's his called now? He just changed. It's now the Skate Park Project, and then Rob Deardex, Street League Skate Park Foundation. He has called his Safe Skate Spots. And anyway, big names, big things coming. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you. Brian, when was the event again? Tell us again when it was.
June 8th.
June 8th.
June 8th, yes.
And tell us the location.
It's actually gonna be, when I was meeting with the head of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, James, on that Thursday, trailers were being hauled out as I was pulling in. So I got some drone footage. I'm a drone pilot, so I threw my drone in the air, documented everything with my cameras and all that, but he's given me blessing to use that slab. Obviously, I'll be out there filling some cracks, leaf blower, pressure washer, get it all nice and pretty. But the pool will be open, so there's gonna be cross-traffic there. Just running a gun and trying to...
June 8th at the Betty Queen Center?
June 8th, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Is there...are there any other Louisa County residents which to address the board? All right. The last card I have is Kirk Bowers.
I think I'm gonna ask for five minutes because I represent a large organization, if I may.
Who do you represent, sir?
Sierra Club.
Did they send you here, or you're just a member?
No, I am sent here on official business.
Give me a minute so we can change it.
Okay.
All right. For the record, state your name, your county. You don't need an address, and then the organization that you're representing.
My name is Kirk Bowers. I live in Alamo County. I've lived there for 36 years. And what was the other part?
The organization that you're representing.
Sierra Club.
Yes, sir.
Virginia Chapter Piedmont Group.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Chairman Adams, Honoring Board Members. Thank you for your kind attention this evening. I represent the Sierra Club. I'm here to speak about concerns with the proposed Amazon Data Center this evening. You may have received emails from me earlier today and other action alerts from some of our members. We have over 2,000 members in this region in central Virginia. We're fairly active. I'm the Conservation Chair. My credentials include over 40 years as a civil engineer licensed in Virginia. I'm very familiar with the permitting process for site plans and infrastructure development. I'm a native of Roanoke County, and my ancestry goes back over 400 years in Virginia. I sent you all the comments this morning on the data center this evening. I'm here to talk to you about some of the major points I made in that email. Point one is, one of the better ideas is to surround the data center with fields of solar panels and banks of batteries. At least, Amazon should be expected to follow Google's example and buy renewable energy credits and storage to meet their electricity needs. REX, that's called Renewable Energy Credits, can be bought. The facilities can be built out West, and they get the credit to offset their data, their electricity usage and their greenhouse gas emissions. So that's how they do it. Amazon has the resources to do that, and Google and others are already doing this. It's a common practice, and I encourage you all to ask them, to lobby them, to buy REX. Point two, data centers that source their own renewable energy are motivated to use less electricity. It's a cost-measure savings for them. Point three, data centers should be the ones paying all costs, not residential customers. Analysis of the expected cost of infrastructure expansion necessary to service data center demand for energy, water, transmission lines, sewer, new roads, energy substations should all be conducted as part of and before the final project approval to make sure everything is in good shape for you guys. And then the next point, in the performance agreement, I noticed that you have given the review agencies 60 days to approve the project or the site plans. Well, as a civil engineer, I know that's not reasonable. That's not feasible. The first review by law, the ENS plans have 45 days review period. You never get a plan through on the first try. It's gonna take at least 120 to 160 days to make it, to get the site plan approvals and other permits, including the Corps of Engineers permit for the wetlands impacts. And then point five, and this is a major impact on Louisa County, I believe. Amazon's average daily raw water demand would be 620,000 gallons per day. With the current demand, that would be over 1 million gallons per day, and that includes residential customers. Will the Northeast Creek Reservoir have the capacity to meet water supply? A water supply study should be performed before project approval to ensure there's adequate water supply until the year 2050. Make sure you guys have water before you share it with Amazon. We really think that these requests serve the best interests of Louisa County. We are very interested in preserving the local environment and culture here. That's one of the things we do. We also need data centers to provide essential internet services. However, the data center will have a large impact on the landscape of Louisa County and a significant demand for energy that will increase greenhouse gas emissions. And that's all I have to say this evening. If you have any questions, you can comment me...contact me, sorry, at the email address I sent you this morning. I'd be glad to help and assist you in any way that we can. Thank you so much for your time and kind attention.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. All right, I don't have any other cards for anyone to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board during public comment?
Ms. Kim.
Yes.
I would just like to recognize that we have an email today from a citizen who I want to put in the board packet that couldn't be here for public comment. Mr. Richard Welch. Welch.
All right. So noted. All right, we'll close public comment, move on to information and discussion items. Not the first, the only presentation we have under that tonight is from the Historical Society, and I see several people here. I see Caitlin now, I think. That blocks everybody that's right there, sir.
I haven't sat in the front row, and so the first time I sat there, I didn't realize how small it was. Okay. Good evening, all. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to update you on the progress of Louisa County Historical Society and the Sergeant Museum. Since last I appeared before you, the museum has been abuzz with activity. Highlights from this late fall and winter include the participation in the Town of Louisa 150th Celebration, our annual holiday open house, a flurry of workshops ranging from wreath making at Christmas time to we'll have our felting workshop this weekend. Our annual meeting, which focused on the experiences of longtime Louisans here in the county. Those individuals on the Oral History Panel included Ms. Yvonne Moody-Washington, Judge Susan Whitlock, Reverend Larry Lewis, and Mrs. Olivia Ryan. And then the other big news that I came here to inform you all on is, last we spoke, Ethan Starr, who was our Programs Director, had left, and we were in the process of replacing his position. So we have hired, and she just started about three weeks ago, our new part-time visitor program and services manager. Her name is Jessica Black. She grew up here in, not in Louisa, but in Orange, in central Virginia region. She graduated with her Master's in Museum Education from George Washington University, and she loves to share her passion for history programs and education. So if you happen to be by the museum, stop on by, and she will be there Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for you to meet her. Last year, and I just realized, I'm not sure how to change this.
You gotta click it right up there.
Oh, there it is.
You said right-side era.
Okay, perfect. Last year, the Historical Society spoke with you all about how we're changing our fundraising and outreach plans. Over the past year, we've really excelled in community engagement. Engagement numbers, which are tallied from our website and social media interaction, event participation, and museum visitation are all up. In one year's time, we've increased engagement by 23%. More people, locals especially, are coming to the museum for assistance with research, to donate items to the collection, or to seek advice on everything from their historic home to how fiber from their sheep is processed. Requests to complete research are up by 85%. We've been fielding two to five research requests a week since the beginning of the year. Our goal has always been to support our community and provide factual information to allow for the best possible outcome for historic preservation. Founded in 1966, the Louisa County Historical Society brings to light, preserves, and shares the history of Louisa County. We celebrate the diversity of our community and are committed to forming relationships to arrive at a more inclusive history. We bring history to life by striving to engage the public with a deeper understanding of the past and to inspire action to promote a better future. Over the last year, we've spent an extraordinary amount of time and effort working with community partners to build...bring Louisa's history to the forefront. This can be seen particularly through our educational programs. In October, for example, and this is up here on...I don't...your left, I guess. Students from the Louisa County Public Schools Senior Culinary Class or Hearth Cooking Guild led 20 students through a variety of traditional cooking techniques highlighting local history that would support their SOL requirements for the class. In the next month, we will host 14 children from the local American Heritage Girls Troop for a free workshop on textiles with our Fiber Arts Guild as they complete their textile badge, or I guess weaving badge. The museum will also host 4th graders from the Salem Christian School in Gum Sprang for a field trip later this month, centering on Virginia State...the Virginia State History Unit. Being able to bring in or go to one new outside organization has been a real success, and we're doing it more on a monthly basis than we've ever done before. We're finding people who have never come to the museum coming to us because they've heard about us from someone else. As you contemplate all that we've accomplished in this last year, we hope you'll reconsider funding the Sergeant Museum based on the packet submitted in November for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Funds help us bring Louisa County history to life. Any cut in funding would compromise our ability to continue to bring quality educational programs, living history interpretation, historic research requests, and genealogical services to the county. Yet, the museum will continue to produce high-quality informative programs for our community with whatever resources are available to us. So we hope you'll stop by one of our many programs this year to see what we've been up to firsthand. In March, we'll kick off our Free Family Days for this year with a focus on women in Louisa County, highlighting some of the important teachers who have shaped Louisa's children throughout time. On the 16th, stop by for the museum for our joint event hosted with the Trevillion Station Battlefield Foundation for a discussion of life on the home front during the Civil War. We'll guide you through day-to-day life for the women who are at home running households and plantations, all while figuring out how to make do with shortages in supplies and foodstuffs. The two other big events on our horizon are Annual Heritage Day, which is the last Saturday in the month in April, April 27th, which will showcase a range of Louisa's history from past to present. Hands-on activities and living history demonstrations will be front and center for all who attend. And keep your eyes out for our Old Homes of Louisa County Tour, which will take place on Saturday, June 22nd. This fundraising event will allow individuals to see inside some of Louisa's historic homes. We hope you'll make it out. Thank you, as always, for your continued support, and we look forward to updating you on all of our programs. on all of our progress as the year continues.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I just, Caitlin.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine. I just want to thank you. I know last week that you met with the Lion Pride Run Team.
Yeah.
And you gave them a-
We had a great time.
That's what I heard. My son was one of them, and he came back so excited. And just thank you, you gave them a phenomenal history of the Jack Jewett ride across the county as they prepare for the Lion Pride Run and running the actual-
Well, we're excited to participate in it. It's definitely, it's a new and interesting way that history is going to be displayed for the county.
I think it is. So I just wanted to thank you for your role in that.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to help.
Mr. McConaughey.
Just real quick, speaking of displaying history, if you go to the museum, which I did somewhat recently, you will find one of the most unique gifts you could ever give, which are their replicas of unique maps of Louisa County. So that was a very interesting find for me when I visited the museum.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
And thank you all for being here. All right, next we'll move under New Business Action Items as a resolution authorizing a lease financing with the Virginia Resources Authority. Ms. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in front of you is a resolution to approve or deny a lease financing with the Virginia Resource Authority. As part of the FY24 budget, this debt issuance was included in that, so this is for the utilities at the Shannon Hill Business Park, as well as the turf fields. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Coleman?
Move or approve it?
Second.
Then properly move to second that we-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Let me finish in the last question. You properly moved to second that we approve the, our discussion, Mr. Woodward.
I would just like to explain why I'm going to vote the way I am tonight. I realize the importance, and I guess somewhat timely fashion, that we need to get this done, but from my understanding, part of the money that we're looking to use to make our payments on this is money that, I guess we're getting close to knowing that we're going to get, but we still aren't, don't have any kind of guarantee on it. And with that said, I just can't vote in favor of this, but I just wanted to say that. I mean, we're going so deep in debt, that somewhere along the line, we have to start trying to control our debt load.
Mr. Barnes.
I would like, Mr. Woodward has brought up a good point, and it seems like to me, I also don't want to be spending money before we get it and that kind of thing, so I would, if I could, get an explanation of how it is we're paying for this before this vote, so that I can-
Any other discussion? You want to address that? You want to address that?
I can try. So you mean how is, or how are the payments being made?
Well-
They'll be made from the general fund revenues that will be coming in through the next, hopefully, within the next 10 years, definitely, and hopefully with future revenues, we'll be able to pay it off earlier, you know, than the 30-year issuance date.
So, so we are doing a bond, rather than, we're not paying for things as we go.
This is, this is for the utilities at Shannon Hill, and no, this is a debt issuance with, it's 1.2 million is the debt payment each year for the next 30 years. If we draw it out to the end, if we do get revenues quicker from other projects, we hope to pay it off in 10 years, but it is a 30-year debt issuance, just like y'all approved as part of the FY24 budget.
I guess my question is-
Yes, to me.
Sorry. Maybe I'm not answering what you're asking, I'm sorry.
No, I think you're doing, you're doing a good job. It's just, we're issuing debt, so why are we doing that as, I mean, are we spending money before we get it, I guess is what I'm asking. I'm, I know it's an important project, which we need to do, but I'm not fully understanding why it is that we are issuing bonds to do it, I guess.
I can try to answer that if you'd like, Mr. Barlow. I mean, it's a bigger project than, you know, it's somewhat akin to maybe building a school. It would be perhaps more expensive than you would want to use fund balances for in any given year. And it also, certain projects like that, that would have a long-term benefit, you often spread the costs of those projects out over the years that people are earning benefit from the project, or in this case, deriving revenues from the project in the case of economic development or that type of thing. So it is up to you if you all want to direct staff to pay it from cash, but with the larger projects of that magnitude, the board has issued debt in the past, but again, the decision is yours.
I guess my next question is, we are moving forward with this, the project, and is it, it just puts us in a better position for something else coming in?
Yes, sir. As you're, as you and your colleagues are aware, we've had a significant amount of interest, speaking specifically to Shannon Hill now, but with economic development, the speed to market is of critical importance to people who would want to locate in a place like that. And you either have something that is ready for the market, or they go somewhere where it is. And the board has been, the board has had a primary goal of diversifying our economy and creating jobs for local citizens, and these types of efforts are very important towards doing that, if that's what the board wants to continue doing. But to answer your question succinctly, if you don't have that infrastructure there, you severely compromise your ability to attract that type of growth.
I was out by the Shannon Hill Business Park last week. I took a picture, I should have, I sent it to Andy and complimented him on it. The water tower, I suspect by today, is about half done. It was a third or quarter done two weeks ago. I mean, this is just continuing to bring the infrastructure so that we can market the park.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would address my question to Supervisor Woodward. Would you have a, an alternative solution if you were not possibly going to support this one?
Well, I think that the turf fields could possibly be paid for under money that we have in a reserve fund, if it's allowed to be used for that. The 17 roughly million dollars for Shannon Hill Business Park, I don't have an answer other than waiting until maybe we get some of this other debt load taken care of. We've got two school buildings that I think are critical that we get built, that are going to be in a neighborhood of $60 million of debt. I just think we maybe need to take a little break on some of these projects that, you know, I want industry in here as much as anybody else, but, you know, hopefully, we're going to have quite a bit of money coming in to the county in the next three to five years, but it's not here yet, so.
Just keep in mind, the project has already started, because y'all approved previously to do reimbursements. We have started it, and we have a grant, absolutely. I mean, just keep in mind, that project, part of the project has started. Now, how we pay for it is absolutely cash.
All I'm saying is-
Just didn't want to mess you up there.
That I cannot vote in favor of doing this bond at this point.
Absolutely. No, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to keep beating this to death, and each board member definitely have their rights to feel the way they do. For the record, I didn't vote for the Shannon Hill project when it first came out. I want to be upfront about that. But as a sitting board member, we're in it. We're in it. And we, the county has been obligated, we're in it. Now, the best way anybody in economic development, you use bonds to make that happen. This board has been, and I challenge anybody to look at our audit, this board has been very prudent, been very conscious of tax dollars, and we've done a very good job. You look at Zions Crossroad, you look at the things that we're doing, we got a $12 million grant for that project, so we're in it. We're not going to be, we're in it. We got over $40 million coming from James River, that we've been putting in the James River project, we're in it. So we are in it. We got to figure out the best way. I understand, pardon me, but I've been with the board 25 years, I've seen how we do it, and we've got a good plan, good economic plan. Shannon Hill, even though I vote against it, is going to be a very good economic engine for the county.
I was, if I have a comment, try to make it last. I didn't write down notes, so you didn't steal my notes, but I was going to say something along the same lines. Of course, Finance Committee recommends this, so I do plan on supporting it, but I didn't vote for the Shannon Hill Business Park either. But we're here, we're there, we're in it to the tone of millions and millions of dollars. And a project of this magnitude, this amount of money, I would be very leery about using our cash reserves, and I guess that's why we're issuing bonds, because we're financing it. I did say today during the budget workshop that we had, Finance Committee will present within the next two meetings, a plan to pay this bond, this debt issuance off within 10 years. And I think we, I certainly think we can do that. I don't like taking on debt any more than anybody else, but I do know this, it's never going to be cheaper to develop that park than right now. It's not going to go down in expense, so. Any other discussion? All right, so did we have a motion?
No.
We did.
We did have a motion, yeah. That's right. I asked Mr. Woodward. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes six to one. Did I get that right? Just want to make sure, right, six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a committee report from, I guess, I can't even remember what we called it. What did we call it? It was the Pickleball Parks and Rec-
Parks and Recreation.
Recreation, but was it called Pickleball? Was it?
I don't think it-
I don't remember how we worded the committee name.
That's the gist of it.
But that was the gist of it. We were trying to find solutions to help with our pickleball players and our complex that we have with that. So I am very pleased to announce that we were able to successfully come to an agreement with the schools and with the support of Mr. Straley and our school board, and they are allowing us access to the metal gym. And so this partnership will enable us to expand our recreational offerings and increase availability for pickleball Saturday, in evenings and Saturday sessions. Well, I'm going to add, this is not a permanent solution, and we are looking at, you know, other solutions long-term. This is, this is, I think, a temporary solution that will help get some more access to pickleball time. The details with the full schedule will come out from Parks and Rec. I'd also like to add, on a side note, that within, was it last week that I sent the email? Within the last two weeks, the queen of our pickleball, Miss Annette Hayes, passed away peacefully with her family, so if you can just, she brought pickleball to this community, and she put her, her life into it here, and so I know the pickleball community in Louisa County will miss her a lot and her drive and her force, so. That's all I have to say about that, so stay tuned for Parks and Rec.
Any other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Litter Work Group, which consists of myself and Supervisor Jones and several members of county staff, are under discussion, and I'd like to ask staff to prepare a resolution of support for the next board meeting declaring April 8 through 14th as Louisa Clean Week, and that will be in coordination with Louisa Clean, a group of incredibly active volunteers that are cleaning up the roads, which were noted this evening. I don't think they've gotten to the road on the way to the landfill yet, but they're doing an incredible job on the other roads, so we'll hopefully hear from staff on that resolution for next, next meeting.
Any other committee reports? All right, board appointments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to point Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N Lewis, L-E-W-I-S, to the Piedmont Virginia Community Board of Visitors. Her address is 868 Oakland-
I wouldn't give her address out in public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We'll give that to-
I'll get it to you.
Yeah. Give that to Mrs. Stanley. Mr. Williams?
I want Tommy Barlow to J.R.W.A.
Any other, did you have a board appointment?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to point Nathan Newcomb to the IDA, and I sent, I've already sent his contact information.
All right, is there a second? Take it to those appointments. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six oh. All right, next is County Administrator's Report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just a very brief report this evening. We're continuing to work with the Virginia Department of Transportation on updates to the Hamilton Road Bridge. Stay tuned for more progress on that as we move forward. At its last meeting, the Board of Supervisors authorized the transition of the airport from the Industrial Development Authority to the county. We've had preliminary meetings and a lot of good progress on that to date. Everything is going smoothly, looking at the full fiscal transfer around the beginning of fiscal year '25, so be looking out for that around July. Again, everything going smoothly so far. And then just a couple of dates to make sure that you've got on your agenda. Again, the fishing for kids with special needs is taking place on March the 17th. Please let your constituents know that's a free event. And our Easter Extravaganza is on March the 23rd. So that concludes my prepared remarks. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Will the Easter Bunny be there?
You never know, sir. You'll have to show up to find out.
There you go. Any, any questions for Mr. Coleman? All right, this brings us to public hearings tonight. We have one public hearing, and that is the Presentation by Dominion Energy, the State of the Station Address. And I see at least Mrs. Marshall, and I don't remember your name, and I'm sorry.
I'm Sherri.
It's probably a good thing I don't. Mrs. Marshall, I only know that because I bother her all the time, so.
Well, Chairman Adams, members of the board and county staff, I'm Lisa Hilbert. I am the Site Vice President at North Anna Power Station, and I live in Hanover County. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update of North Anna's performance over the last year. I'm going to check for my notes here. Dominion Energy's North Anna Power Station remains an industry leader in the generation of safe, low-cost, carbon-free electric power. Unit One and Unit Two overall are overall more reliable today than they were brand-new, providing over 15% of the Commonwealth's total generation and 45% of the Commonwealth's total zero-carbon emission. Operating performance for North Anna in 2023 resulted in a combined capacity factor of 95.5%. Unit Two performed a successful 34-day refueling outage and a five-day maintenance outage. Unit One had experienced a two-day maintenance outage, and except for the outages noted, both units operated at full power for all of 2023. I'm proud to share that because of our ongoing efforts, North Anna retains the Institute of Nuclear Power Operations highest rating, a one, and all Nuclear Regulatory Commission performance indicators and inspection findings are the highest code, which is green, which means objectives are being fully met. One of Dominion Energy and North Anna Power Station's core values and highest priority is and always will be safety. This includes the safety of our employees, the safety of the plant, environmental safety, and safety of the public. An NRC emergency preparedness inspection was performed at North Anna in November 2023, and no findings were identified. We continue to work with federal, state, and local organizations to maintain strong relationships that ensure safety and security for the community and the station. As noted in previous years, North Anna continues to be a Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Voluntary Protection Program Star Work Site, or OSHA VPP Star. The VP Star qualification recognizes not only North Anna Power Station, but our employees who really earn this effort. We demonstrate exemplary achievement in the prevention and control of occupational safety and health hazards, as well as the development, implementation, and continuous improvement of their safety and health management system. So in 2023, the station experienced two OSHA recordable injuries and five first-eight events. During our refueling outage, which is the highest point of maintenance, we had no Dominion Energy or supplemental employee OSHA recordable incidences and three minor first-eight events. We fully investigate every safety incident that happens and seek to prevent them going forward ever. I do want to take a moment to remind everybody that in the case of an emergency warranting public notification, the sirens will no longer be activated as the primary alerting method. As of February 21st, 2023, IPaaS, which provides wireless emergency alerts, think like an Amber Alert or a Weather Alert, and outreach to media outlets, will now be used as a secondary alerting methods. We'll- alerting methods will now be used. Secondary alerting methods will continue. There were three reportable environmental events that occurred at North Anna in 2022. I want to detail them for you here. On February 20th, lake water was used to perform a hydrostatic test of a newly constructed concrete tank. Upon satisfactory completion of the test, a release of the water back to Lake Anna began. A sample of this discharge was deemed outside the permit range, and the discharge was immediately stopped. The area was inspected and tested and found to have no visible signs or negative environmental impact. On July 11th, a crack developed on a reverse osmosis pipe downstream of a filter vessel, which caused a leak of approximately 600 gallons of filtered water. A small portion of this filtered clean water made it to a nearby stormwater ditch, and it's unclear if any of it made it to the lake. On September 17th, a bearing cooling basin overflowed, causing water, which is essentially untreated lake water, to discharge to Lake Anna via an unpermitted discharge flow path. All three events, though reportable, were considered minor events and did not result in any negative impact to the environment. North Anna is critical to Dominion Energy meeting its company, meeting the company's and Commonwealth's clean energy goals. On November 13th, 2017, Dominion Energy notified the Nuclear Regulatory Commission of its intent to relicence Unit 1 and Unit 2 for an additional 20 years. The license renewal application was filed on August 24th, 2020, and if approved, North Anna could continue to operate through 2058 and 2060. The NRC hosted virtual public meetings regarding this application on November 4th, 2020, and January 30th, 2024, as well as an in-person public meeting on February 6th, 2024. It's anticipated the NRC will issue their final application decision in the summer of 2024. We continue to hold the combined operating license for the third nuclear reactor at North Anna, and while decision has not yet been made to build another unit, having the license provides us the ability to do so, if approved by the SEC. It would be remiss if I did not mention that Dominion Energy is also evaluating various technologies and locations across the Commonwealth for small modular reactor development to assist in meeting clean energy goals. We continue to diligently monitor and support federal developments related to permanent storage of nuclear spent fuel, and we continue to see a greater interest by Congress in finding a permanent solution as more discussions surrounding nuclear, as a clean energy solution take place. In the interim, North Anna continues to move spent fuel to its interim storage facility and monitor on-site. The current independent spent fuel storage installation will hold the spent fuel produced through the current license end of Unit 1 and Unit 2. North Anna Power Station remains a major employer, taxpayer, and local economic driver in Louisa County. North Anna employs approximately 805 full-time Dominion Energy employees and day-to-day an average of 360 contractors also on-site. And during refueling outages, which we're currently in one, approximately 1,000 additional employees, supplemental personnel join our station employees. This temporary increase in station workforce provides additional revenue for local businesses, merchants, and Louisa County. Dominion Energy's tax payment to Louisa County on behalf of North Anna Power Station in 2023 was $11,015,424. Total taxes paid to Louisa County from Dominion Energy through 2023 amounted to more than $422 million. North Anna continues to process dredging, construction, and use permits for Lake Anna stakeholders. A total of 182 permits, 70 for the Waste Heat Treatment Facility, were issued in Louisa County during 2023, which is a 40% increase in over 2022. And as of January 19th, 2023, there are 27 pending construction and use permits in Louisa County, 19 of which are for the Waste Heat Treatment Facility, and that's a 50% increase over 2022. There are three pending dredging permits in Louisa County that are awaiting additional information from stakeholders. We remain active members with the local community and continue to reinforce relationships and communications with stakeholders interested in North Anna, and as well as Lake Anna and the Waste Heat Treatment Facility. We are active participants in the study and migration and mitigation efforts for harmful algae blooms, as well as other efforts to keep Lake Anna clean and healthy. Dominion Energy continues to promote the maintenance and increase of native vegetation in and around Lake Anna to support the environmental health. No confirmed harmful algae blooms were recorded in 2023 in the Waste Heat Treatment Facility. So I'm most proud of the work ethic, the sense of commitment we have towards our local community. We hold board positions, spend personal time volunteering with numerous organizations. In 2022 alone, over $100,000 and many additional non-monetary donations and numerous volunteer hours were provided to such organizations. Dominion Energy, North Anna Power Station, and our employees work hard to power your every day. We do not simply work in Louisa County. We are your friends and neighbors. Louisa is a truly special place to live and work, and we all recognize our responsibility towards being a good corporate citizen here in our home county. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? I have one, and then a comment. So since you've implemented the IPOL system, when, and I get this question a couple of times a year, when do you think that the poles and the sirens are coming down?
Some are down.
Some are down, I think, but some are still up. Is there a timetable to-
We don't have an effort to.
Don't worry, Sarah's going to answer.
Sarah's going to help me out with-
See, this is why she knows my name. I bother her all the time.
Thank you, Chair. So we are actively working with the landowners where those poles are currently located to work through the various different easements and land use agreements to remove those poles. So I don't have an exact date as to when they'll all be down, but they're actively coming down and working-
It's an ongoing process.
Yes, ongoing process.
You did mention that Dominion was evaluating locations around the state for small modular reactors. Please evaluate Louisa as one of those locations. I never miss an opportunity to say that.
Or two or three locations.
Or two or three. I mean, you know, we're not-
Definitely at North Anna, I would like to.
I would think so. And then the last thing is 11 million thank-yous. We appreciate you being here in the county, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Mr. Barnes?
You got a public hearing. You got closed public hearing. You got open public hearing.
Oh, that's right, it's a public hearing. Darn, I wanted to get out of here. I opened a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak during this public hearing? Mrs. Hart?
Why do we know that?
Oh, man.
Just start calling.
The one time I called on you preemptively, you said you didn't have anything to say, but-
That was once.
She got a-
Vicki Hart, Town of Louisa. I was listening to Maestin. Pelican Reds and Arms, and I had noticed they said there were public hearings held. Why did we not get notice of the public hearings? I looked them up on the NRC Gov side. They were held at Zion Crossroads, Best Western. I had never got notice that there was going to be a public hearing. So my question is, did you? And I did not get any feedback on who actually knew about it and what-
I'm sure we got notice.
You're sure we got notice?
I'm sure I got notice.
Well, it's a public hearing.
Well, I'm sure I got notice. I'm part of the public. I'm sure I got notice.
And to follow up with that, regarding public notices, just so you're aware, I don't know anybody in my circle of influence that has a Richmond Times-Dispatch or a Charlottesville paper subscription for public notices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Barnes?
So move.
Improperly moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify-